Promoting citywide volunteerism, we will also keep it small and manageable while taking a positive approach to the issues and the growth. This is not a fee appointing committee. This is a less help committee, and I think working together, we can accomplish that. It's our Biloxi, it's our Harbors, and together, we can make Biloxi brighter and shine more than ever, especially our Harbors. I look forward to speaking with you all soon, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else on my left, your right? Raise your hand to be recognized. Anyone on my right, your left? Yes, ma'am, in the back.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Lori Silvestro. I live at 181 Iris Street. Normally, my husband is here, but he's away on business, so I'm going to be his voice today. But I'm here to speak about the plan for the zoning change for the Bouvoir Villas. I know that the builder has modified the plan to 200-plus homes, but it just doesn't seem to make sense to me. Monarch Villas, a much smaller scale of what's planned for Bouvoir, remain unsold. At least 20 of them remain unsold, and these were constructed in 2024, so why build 200 more? The builder has also had a history of presenting plans for one thing and then changing it after the construction starts. For example, Coral Breeze, same villas with more green space on the beach. Please recall that these villas were not the original plan for Coral Breeze. There was a heated city council meeting around change requests made by Elliot Holmes, and the approved plans for the record were for a higher and coastal apartment complex, but Elliot never built to that plan. He went and built the villas and then asked for forgiveness later. I don't trust this builder to hold to the plans that would be approved, so I respectfully ask the council to consider denying the zoning change request from an RS10 to a PD. Remember, the purpose of a PD is to improve an area. Our neighbors have worked tirelessly to make sure that the landowners around us took responsibility to clear the broadwater, even though it has overgrown again. We've picked up trash. We, you know, have always requested that the vacant school property be maintained. We've worked very hard for our neighborhood and surrounding area to show improvement, and I do not believe that Elliot Holmes or Meritage, whatever name it will be under, is going to have Biloxi's best interests at heart in this case. And I just want to say that I think the true plan that Elliot has is hidden. It's not revealed, and if you change to a PD, what are the like, what's the likelihood of him changing his plans into anything that he wants? So I just respectfully ask that you take serious consideration in what's best for Biloxi and not for the builder's pockets. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone on my right? Lady in the red.
Good afternoon. My name is Jabber McGee. I am the business manager of the Second Liners Waterfront Club, and I only come here to thank the mayor and the councilman for your part in helping us acquire Bix Park on two Saturdays ago. What we did was we gave away 400 backpacks to the community. We fed them, we had hot dogs, chips, sodas, ice cream, and snowballs, and it was a great event, and I just want to reach out to you and just say thank you. We did use the men's bathroom, because that was the only one that was accessible to us because one of them is not working, as Mr. Moynihan said. So everything was a great success, and I just wanted to thank you for that from the Second Liners.
Thank you. Gentlemen in the back.
My name is Steve Shepherd. I actually live in Jackson County over in Goche, but I'm the Gulf Coast Group Chair for the Sierra Club, and I'm coming on behalf of people in Biloxi that are in the Sierra Club and also concerned about the future of Biloxi in relation to overgrowth, overdevelopment, overcrowding, not enough green space. Of course, we obviously object to cutting down live oak trees just to help some developers somewhere. So what I'm here for is one thing. The proposed subdivision at Bouvar Villa does not have enough open space according as required by law. Let's see, the proposed subdivision includes less than 5% open space set aside, falling more than 100,000 square feet short of the 20% minimum required by law. And it's for that reason I asked everyone here to vote no. Think about open space. Think about the future of this city, and don't just end up with these postage-stamped, crowded-together developments. In the long run, they're not going to look good. But anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Kavanaugh.
My name is Mike Kavanaugh. I'm at 134 St. Jude. I need to get my printer to work, so I had to bring my laptop. I'm here today to speak against Case 25-011, the Elliot Holmes Bouvar Villas development. The, for those of you who are not aware, Change.org petition has been circulating online since May 1st, opposition to this development. It currently has 330 signatures with the vast majority of the signatures are residents of Biloxi. The project is going to rezone from a single-family low-density to a PDR. Included in that change petition are the following points as related to the development, and I'm going to reiterate what the previous speaker said as well, but the proposal would build 230 two-story homes on lots of 1,500 square feet. That is smaller than mobile home zoning in the city of Biloxi. Mobile home zoning requires 3,600 square feet per home site. Bouvar Villas is twice as dense as a mobile home park, so that just gives you an idea of the scale of the density. Inappropriate use of a PDR. The PDR is designed to be more conducive to creating mixed-use, pedestrian-oriented, higher-quality development, intended to encourage the use of innovative and creative design to provide a mix of different residential uses in close proximity to one another. This is out of the LDO. Not simply to be used as an end-around for bypassing existing zoning laws. Approval of Bouvar Villas provides none of these qualities recommended above, but does set a dangerous precedent, enabling future developers to come in, and if they're not happy with their zoning, do a PDR, and you can get as much, you know, as many as you can fit on the property. So it opens a can of worms, in my opinion. And then finally, the space ordinance that was just mentioned, the PDR, and these are all according to the LDO. The PDR designation comes a legal obligation to set aside 20% of the total property for open space. Bouvar Villas currently, that 20% requirement would be 145,000 square feet. Currently, their plan calls for 100,000, uh, 40,000 square feet, I'm sorry, 100,000 square feet short. So that's just 5% of the property as opposed to 20. So as an approval body, you would be approving something that does not conform to the LDO guidelines, and it is not something that can be modified per the LDO. That is a strict requirement. So finally, the developer is out of step with established neighborhood standards, threatens integrity, safety, and livability of our community, and while creating a path for bypassing existing zoning standards, for these reasons, I ask you to deny.
Thank you, Mr. Kavanaugh. Thank you. Anyone else on my right, your left? Come on up.
Good afternoon. My name is Bobby Heinrich. I'm at 1806 23rd Avenue in Gupport, and I'm here to represent the developer for Bouvar Villas, and I'd like to make it known that if you have any questions about this development, I'd be happy to answer them. We have worked diligently with your DRC Committee. We answered all concerns, comments with every department in the city of Biloxi. We do that before we go to the Planning Commission. And so we had our hearing at the Planning Commission. It was a 15 to 1 vote in favor of the development. We answered all the questions. We're saving trees. The density is there. These numbers that these folks are coming up with is not correct as far as green space and things like that. I have all that calculated. It had been brought forth to the Planning Commission. These are single-family homes. They're not rentals. They're not to be, it's not a rental project. It's a gated community. We're going to have a brick and wrought iron fence completely around this property for protection and safety. Again, we're saving all these, the live oaks that are out there, that's been out there forever when the school was there. It's adjacent to apartments. We feel that the density, well, we meet the density requirement for this project. If someone wanted to come in and do a project there other than this, they would probably most likely do apartments. Well, you would be doubling those units for apartments than what we're requesting. So anyway, I just want to make it, just off of that, if anybody has any questions about this project, I'll be happy to answer them later on in the, in the hearing here. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone on my right? Your hand raised? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Daisy Guyton, 334 Three Yard Street, Biloxi, 42. I have a concern about garbage cans. I have not spoken to Mr. Marshall as yet, but we had a crew out, well, we, the city, last week doing the sidewalks. They could not do a good job because there's so many garbage cans, just, they never take them in. They leave them out, and that's my concern for today. I also noticed this morning that, I think they were from the police department, and they were putting citations on cars because they parked on the sidewalk. And I appreciate whoever was in charge of sparring that because that was a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you.
What street was that?
Yes, ma'am.
I hope they aren't okay.
Yep.
My name's Sheri Hare. I live on 170 Iris Street, Biloxi. My family's owned the house there since the 60s, and so have my friends have lived there since the 60s. Nobody sent us nothing, asked us anything, but we thought about that. But if they want to put homes there, why do they have to put so many instead of all them? There's not enough room out there. There's not enough, nothing. They haven't even sold the ones they had on the beach, so why are they going to sell some that's off the beach? And also, the, the properties that they killed all the animals for to clean up, just let them grow right back up again, so. And all the homeless people are back out there again. They're not causing us problems, but they're back out there again, so it's just going to be a matter of time before they do. And my friend got a ticket for his yard being 17 inches tall, but they got 10 feet tall over there. They're not doing nothing with that. That's all I got.
Thank you. Anyone else on my right, your left? I'm going to go back over here. I saw a hand or two earlier. Anyone on my left, your right? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Carol D. Andrew Teague. I live at 2507 Orleans Road in Biloxi, and I too am speaking against the, the idea of the Bouvar Villas. Nobody has stopped to thought about the impact on the traffic alone, if they were able to even consider building all those homes in a condensed area. That is going to have a horrible impact on Pass Road. It's going to have a terrible impact on Iris, at Lawrence, Terra Lane, and all the smaller streets in between. And as the others who have been here before me have already, you know, stated all the facts on why, that would not be a good idea to put so many homes in a condensed area. And again, it would be terrible for the, um, the traffic. Those roadways are not conducted to have so many homes in one small area.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? My left, your right? Anyone in the back of the room?
I'm coming.
Come on up. Take your time.
My name is Shonda Guyton. I'm also at 334 Third Street. And the fellow that was sitting up here talking about the Bouvar Villa, I'm not interested in how many bricks she's going to have or how many gates she's going to have. I'm interested in somebody telling me when they're going to find something for affordable housing, something that I can afford. You know, they got all this land down there on Holly Street. They got land across the tracks. Somebody needs to do something about affordable housing instead of all these expensive apartments that they trying to build down at Bouvila, whoever, Villa. I'm not interested in that. So can any of y'all tell me anything?
Not a question and answer, but you can talk to your councilman after.
Oh, yeah, I, I would most definitely do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, I'll make one more sweep. Anybody else? Raise your hand if you'd like to say something.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
The Housing Authority, and I was appointed by my mayor, and we are looking for houses for our people. And if there are some houses, then we do not need to object to that. There's people in this community that need housing, and they need housing that they can afford. So I hope that you all will consider that. The young lady that just spoke, Ms. Guyton, she's been looking for a house for about two years, and we can't give her one because we don't have any openness. So let's don't fight progress in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else like to speak? All right, we'll go ahead and close Citizens' Comments, and we'll move on to the policy agenda. Whenever you're ready.
Orders to approve a zoning map amendment to authorize a change in zoning for a portion of two parcels of land from RS10 low-density single-family residential to our main regional business for 1503南La Rain Road.
I have a motion. Second. Mr. Shoemaker?
Second.
Second by Mr. Tisdale. This is a first reading.
Orders to amend Chapter 2, Article 14 pertaining to municipal facilities.
I have a motion. Motion by Mr. Creel. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Nail. It's a first reading.
Orders to approve a zoning map amendment to grant a PDR planned development residential master plan to construct a 213-lot single-family residential subdivision located at 2003 Lawrence Street.
Moved by?
Newman, Gines. Newman, Gines.
All right, this was moved by previous council members, Newman and Gines. I would ask that we'll have a new motion and second. The chair will entertain that now. Do I have a motion? Do I have a motion? Move it for discussion. Do I have a motion to move it for discussion?
Let me question the attorney, Peter. Is discussion required for an item of this nature that's appealable?
I think we have a current appeal where we had a similar project where there was no motion and second, and the legal ramifications of that, I think if it, if there's no motion or second, then the motion just fails, is my opinion. The attorney for the other side does not agree with that, but there's no real, there's not a lot of cases on that.
Right, and I would, but I would assume if it's appealable, and this would be appealable, correct?
Yes, it would.
Correctly, and the judge that would review this is looking for findings? Would that be the correct term, findings by the council or the reasoning?
Generally, that's when it, that's when it's moved in second place before the council for consideration. If something doesn't get a motion or a second, it, it doesn't get on. Now, and it may still be appealable, but whether findings of why there was not a motion passed, I don't think that's really a, that's not really a consideration.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Just to clarify, I just want to make sure the chair that there is no motion. There is no motion. All right. Item, item is, fails for lack of a motion. Move on to the next item.
Orders to approve a zoning map amendment to authorize a change in zoning for two parcels of land from waterfront to community business for 1732 and 1736 Beach Boulevard.
All right, this was moved by Mr. Creel, seconded by Mr. Gray. Mr. Creel.
Yes, so this was originally waterfront. It's too small for casino development, so he's trying to conform it to something that he can be more, more utilized, if I'm correct.
That's me at Dead Cat without any Creel.
Yes, sir. What, what happened after Hurricane Katrina is that everybody was running out to get their property changed to waterfront with the anticipation that they'd have an approved casino site at some time. And I think after a period of time, reality has set in now, and they realize that they don't have an area that could even be considered for a casino, so they're looking for some realistic zoning for projects that they can bring. In this particular case, they're asking for CB zoning, which is our hospitality and entertainment zoning. It's the right zoning for Highway 90 in this area, and they're proposing to build an upscale car wash there. That's what the zoning change is for.
Okay, all right. Mr. Gray.
I would, I would support this. I mean, we need to start getting some business coming back, and car wash on 90, we don't have one, so I would look forward to seeing one be built there. That's all.
All right, anyone else?
I have a, I have a question.
Mr. Tisdale.
Jerry, um, we're talking about two parcels?
Yes, sir.
That total 300, 3, roughly three and a half acres? So one is a large parcel and the other's a smaller parcel?
Yes, sir.
And do I remember correctly, the smaller parcel runs to the west adjacent to the larger parcel, right there by Travia Street?
Yes, sir. There should be a, yeah, I'm looking. Drawing in your pattern, there's a very small parcel up front in the southeast corner?
Yeah.
And then the rest of it runs very long, running north, that goes up to the RMH property that's, is only a lot north of this.
Okay. All right, and we're talking about, when, when I hear car wash, beachfront, do we know if that's going to be on the larger parcel or the smaller parcel?
It's going to be up at the front. The car wash is not going to take up this entire piece of property.
Right.
So they're only going to take a portion of it, and they have future plans to develop the rear part of that property, again, probably for a hotel or something like that.
And what's, what fronts Highway 90? That would be, I would assume, the smaller parcel and part of the larger parcel.
That's correct, yes, sir.
Am I asking to collapse the, the parcels into one, the two parcels into one parcel or anything? It's going to remain two separate parcels?
They haven't yet, but they can do that at any time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tisdale. Anyone else? We're still open for discussion. There being none, our call for the question, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries unanimous.
Resolution authorizing approval and execution of a contract with DNP for HVAC services for the Greenwich Community Center HVAC replacement project.
This was previous move by Councilman Marshall and seconded by Councilman Tisdale. Mr. Marshall.
All right, bear with me, it's going to take just a minute. I'm not going to be as long as I was the last time, but first and last, I'll be thanking my fellow council members. Last, two weeks ago, I asked you for two weeks in order to look at this, in order to find out exactly what was going on. This is something that was done, what'd you call it, Mr. Fofo? Before Fofo? This wasn't, trust me, this wasn't. But this is done before, before us came on, the new, the new council members. So when things like this come up, I need to look at it before I follow through on it. And I believe that the two weeks that you guys gave me to do so, and you actually gave yourselves, because I appreciate you guys joining in with me. With that in mind, I need to see if I can get the white people up to talk, because I need to, still want to, what it is is this. First of all, I am not against the air conditioning going into the Greenwich Center. No one is against it. No one has spoken against it. We all say, you gotta have air conditioning? Let's do the air conditioning. What we have a problem with is the source of the funds that are being used to put the air conditioning in. That's the only thing that we have an issue with. We don't have a problem with many of the projects that go on. We just have a problem with the source of where the money came from. When the money comes from what the old folks called Robin Peter to pay Paul, sometimes, but when a certain area is always Peter, that becomes the problem. So I'm going to ask that, to answer a few questions, to confirm the knowledge that we've gotten, because Mr. Tisdale, Mr. Grabben, we've been following up the people in Washington, we've had some very powerful people contact us about information in order that we can get clear clarity of what these funds are designed for and what our limitations are. And that way, we can make sure that we're making the right decision when we make a decision. If it's okay, if I can, I call up Mrs. Susan Pickett.
Good afternoon.
All right, Ms. Pickett, first, I want to thank you for all the help that you've given. I know it has been kind of stressful, been kind of hard, but I had to understand what we're doing here. One of the things that I, I requested from you was the, explaining to me the different programs, I come to find out it's basically CB, CDBG, and CBBGCV are two different sources of funds.
Correct.
Okay? They are two different sets of rules.
Correct.
Okay? I'm going to try and talk mainly about CDBGCV, which are the funds that we're talking about now.
Correct.
Okay? How long have we had those funds?
2020.
Six years. We could use them at any time during the six years of projects.
They ended in '23. They were to They were to take them back. We had notification that they were going to be taken back, that they ended. So that's when we abandoned the other projects that were amended to do. And then HUD came back to us, the mayor, and said, we need to help you all spend these, these funds. So that's when they suggested this type of project. And we ran with it, and here we are today.
Okay. So could the money have been used for any other project more directly serving the people?
Correct, yes.
I have heard a letter from you, and it stated a few things that we discussed. One is roofs. Approved, could be, could be approved for that? Okay? So in other words, someone who has a house, and let's, let's go over the numbers again, if you don't mind. We're saying people could, it was, it was a little disturbing to find out that it wasn't just for the East Biloxi. Is that correct?
Correct.
So these funds could be used for anybody in the city.
Low mod.
In the city of Biloxi, low mod. Low mod is one person making less than low, making less than $39,000 a year. Mod is $62,400, one house, one first house. But we have a husband, a wife, and two children living, which is their average household. We're talking a father, his wife, and their two children. Okay? And they're making less than, four people making less than $89,000 a house. And they have a leaky roof. They got mold because of the leaky roof. Their children having trouble breathing. That's the tieback to the COVID.
Correct.
So these funds could have helped, it could have been a teacher or a father. People who are making less than $89,000 a year, no matter they live in Mr. Shoemaker's district, if he had been Mr. Grabham's ward, it would have to be anywhere. Is that true?
Yes.
Let me jump into, those funds needed to be completed by 2023. It wasn't, it was, the projects that we would have chosen had to be completed with the restrictions as far as ownership and qualifications for those projects.
Correct.
So it just, it wasn't available, it had to be completed by 2023.
Correct.
But they came back to say, let's find another project. And that's the one they're suggesting, this one you guys did. But you could have, you could have chose to do another one.
At that point, we, we were running out of time.
So people didn't, the people buried roofs, making less than, almost just rounding down, just $90,000 a year, family for air conditionings. It could have been used for that. These, these are all approved funds. This is, this is your information given to me. These are all approved things that could have been done. Now, I asked for two weeks to get a program together. And just in case we have enough time to do that. When I asked the gentleman here for two weeks, I said, if by chance, it sounds as though anything that we do could jeopardize us losing the funds, then I will not hold them to it. So therefore, that's why I called each one, again, to let you know. If, if we talked to Washington DC, they said it's a possibility. And we're not through, as the mayor said. By the 26th, by the 16th of 2026, one year, if everything, then what was left has to go back to them. I didn't want to risk that. So therefore, I did let them know that we did stop. However, within a week of us working, I've come up with four or five programs HUD approved, all the documentation done, that's been done all across the country. So the timeframe to do it was very feasible. They are, they already canned and ready. There, there are other cities doing this same program with HUD approval all across the country. So it was possible. But I didn't push the issue anymore. You gave me what I asked for, and that's all I could ask for. One of the things I want to remind people is that when you see CDBG, it's not just for a street. As I looked at the CDBG program, the original CDBG or another CV, we've spent a lot of money spent on fire trucks. How many fire trucks have we bought?
Two, I think.
Several, over the years, several.
With CDBG funds?
Correct.
The last one cost how many million?
Uh, 27.
How much? $1.1. $1.1 million for a fire truck. Could that $1.1 million have been used for their father? Who needs, who's struggling to pay his mortgage, keeping his insurance paid? Roof leaking, air conditioner not working? Children breathing in, could have been used for that?
Yes.
How about grandmama and granddaddy? They're suffering, they're elderly. They don't have the money to fix those roofs. Could have been used for that?
Yes.
The problem I got is the source. We have other ways and other means to buy fire trucks. We have other ways and other means to fix roads. We can do this without taking the money from the people that it was designed to help. Am I correct in saying that? When you put your application in, you put your application into HUD, stating the difficulties and the hardships of the people in the community?
Correct. It's part of the plan.
Qualifications, qualifications.
Qualifications.
And, and the restrictions that applies to the property you're trying to.
Okay. In other words, in other words, because grandma's making low income, she's struggling, and because the neighborhood is struggling, the neighborhood has bright, the neighborhood has all the crime, and the neighborhood has all the economic downheart hardships, is what you need to put on that application in order to get it approved.
Correct.
So basically, you have to have our bad to get the good, but yet we don't give part of the good. That's the problem that the community has. You don't have to, you're not going to get the money without our hardship. You're not going to get the money without showing that we have bad roofs. You're not going to get the money showing that we have economic decline. You're not going to get a bond if we don't show these things.
Let me, Mr. Councilman, let me jump in at this point in time. You got an allocation of CDBG funds every year based on our population. They said that'll come every year. The allocation of those funds for five-year plans is how we grow. This was very special funds. And a second opportunity for the special funds to use. A total of $900,000 was very straightforward in the spending of this upgrade to Greenwich Center, probably the most used facility we have. And it's a pretty good chunk of change. So in, you know, hindsight is 2020. And, you know, the application of this very, the CV funds that we're talking about, you know, we pulled the trigger the best way we knew how to do that. And, but yet, there will be, we allocated X amount of dollars based on some constraints of, but that will be CDBG. And, and, you know, we had the public hearings on what a five-year plan would look like. And that's the opportunity to bring, you know, as we talked about, developing of East Biloxi and every low mod areas is where we need to get together, identify what is the possible use of those funds in ongoing year after year after year. Because they do look at it. CDBG and HUD looks at it over a different timeframe in a different set of books, as far as I'm, as far as I know. But the immediate problem is, what do we need to do with this, this, the remaining funds? Or what can we do with the remaining funds after we allocate these funds for the HVAC at the, at the Greenwich Center?
Okay. As I said before, Mayor, you said a lot, but I'm going to be very specific. When you're talking hindsight, and you look in the hindsight, we're the one in the hindsight. We have a problem with that. We don't have a problem with the air conditioning. We have a problem of taking the money from the people for the air conditioning. We know that this is a done deal. We know that we're going to leave it alone. But we're going to speak about the future. And the future is, we're going to say this. If your money is set aside for the people, we want it to go to the people. If you're going to always take the CDBG money and use it for infrastructure, which you can go and get bonds, do anything else to do, get it. You have other ways to get fire trucks. You have other ways to do all the things that you're doing. When we, when we talk about, did we put money into the senior theater for the CDBG?
We have in the past. It was all eligible.
So grandma's money is in, is in the senior theater. We don't have, we do not have a problem with the senior theater being rehabbed. We have a problem with the poor people paying for it and not everybody else. It stays here, we, did say we did put money from the city, from the, uh... Are you saying we didn't?
I don't think we did.
I think you answered the voting center.
A long time ago. Not, not in recent years.
But we did take CDBG money, which could have been used for any of those projects.
We've built facilities. I mean, all these projects we've done in the past are eligible projects, approved by HUD, the city, and the city council.
Right. We don't have, we know, we know what is, we know what's possible. We know what you did. We understand that. What we're saying is that it didn't help to directly help the people that needed the help. So what I'm asking for is this. What I'm asking for is this. Okay? If we move forward, starting with the funds that you have now coming in, and we are getting ready to get approved. We put the money directly to the people. To say that we have, we got to jump through hoops and things to make it happen, that's what we get paid to do. That's why they elect us, to figure our way to make it happen.
And, and part of that is the public hearing related to development of the five-year plans. And it's not really easy to get these things approved, signed, sealed, and delivered through the HUD process. So, yeah, we're all in on how we can best impact the, you know, the citizens of Biloxi with regard to the use of CDBG money through HUD.
We have funds coming, we have funds, your application is, is being put in right now, right?
Correct.
When is, has to be turned in?
By the 15th. It'll be on council next week to be approved.
Okay. The largest portion of that money is going where?
To complete the road project.
A road project, approximately how much?
It's like $400,000.
And as we talked to HUD up in Washington, it was suggested that that fund should be reallocated to a substantial amendment.
Correct.
That is where I'm leaving, Mr..
Well, again, let's work the future. I know what, we've done this, it was approved, and it was approved by HUD and approved by the council. These are all funds in low mod areas for the public good. And that, that's the parameters we worked on, and we still work on that.
That's not what I'm asking, sir.
Talking about the future, we're going to talk about the, you know, public hearings that will get everybody's idea on what this can be used very, very program-specific, very specific on what it takes to put, to deliver these different projects. There is, everything has tentacles and strings. And that's what we want to be sure that we can spin it the right way, because we don't want it clawed back.
The Greenwich Center air conditioning was, how many, how many times was it amended?
Action plan, four times.
So each time, in other words, we asked them to do the next plan, we're going to amend it one good time. This was done four times to get the air conditioning over there. We're just going to do it one good time. And it can be done. We've already talked to Washington. Matter of fact, that's the route that they...